Five oh eight. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Karen. Doctor Little.
Present.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Bopplemore.
Present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
President Calhoun.
Present.
Doctor Curry.
Here.
Item two point oh one. Approval of closed session agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Karen. Doctor Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Drable.
No discussion.
Trustee Romo.
No discussion.
President Calhoun. No discussion. See you know, discussion, please place your online vote. And I will do my.
Okay. You have a roll vote?
Our.
Yeah.
I.
Item three point oh one, request to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda items. Do we have any request to address the board of trustees on session agenda item?
Oh, no.
Okay. Item three point oh two. Content community college edition border trustees future agenda items request. Trustees, do we have any requests from future agenda items? Doctor Look.
None.
Trustee Drable.
No.
Trustee Ramos.
I do not.
President Barbara Calhoun. I do not. I will adjourn to closed session at. By ten P M.
At. Six oh seven P M. Roll call, please. Student trustee Karen. Doctor Little. Present. Trustee Bopplemore. Present. Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee, President Calhoun. Present. Doctor Curry.
Present.
We're in five oh two. And is. Let your wings lock and. Student trustee Karen. Please be of the. Lead us from the.
The sorry hand of your heart. Friday again. I'm a lady. To give a five. On the high streets of America. And that's a good reprieve for the. For which it says. One nation. We are. Need to be. For.
Reports of. Item six, before the actions taken in well session. Pursuing the government code section five four eight. Five seven one. Five seven point one. Nothing to report. Item seven. Approval of open session agenda. Okay, so.
Second.
Second. Doctor Curry, are there any corrections, additions, or additions?
Uh, there's a correction to agenda item uh, section thirteen, oh, item thirteen point three two. Item one A number six and number nine should be range twenty six and not twenty five.
Can you say that more than?
Uh, item four, item thirteen point three two, minimum resources. Are no matter. Item one A, number six, or number nine. Should be range twenty six, not twenty five.
We have a voting. And I said. Online vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. All right.
Item eight. Recognition. Recognition of service. And uh.
So can I have the board members on that side, right, something? So just picture it directly first.
No. We all want. In fact. Kind of, we will chat, so a couple of minutes.
So the first presentation tonight is to student trustee Kaitlyn Cars.
Oh.
Who has been on the board as a student trustee since twenty twenty two. And today is her last meeting and student trustee for Compton College Edition. So on behalf of the board of trustees, we're presenting the plan for you, for your service as student trustee.
Well, my girl.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, Kendra, you just can't walk off like that, like we not gonna say nothing. I know there's a lot of other people, but we, we gonna say something, because you know, I'm a miss. You know, everything that you helped me with. That laptop. Enrolling in Compton College, yes, I'm a student at Compton College. And I did online, I didn't wanna come in person, because I didn't want, you know, people to think I was getting special attention, because trust me, I did. Teacher was just as hard on me, and they were talking to all of y'all. They didn't give me no breaks when, when they saw my name, but. You had me enrolled in college, you helped me figure out that laptop. And most of all, you. Served us with dignity and respect. Not only that, every conference that we went to. You upheld the banner of Compton Community College. You talked about your life, you talked about your struggles, you talked about everything that was going on, and you talked about what Compton College. Gave you and did for you in order for you to prosper. So you've been truly this, I do have your phone numbers, I don't wanna. I'm Bill Stalker with her, I don't, I don't know where she going, what college she going to, but if she going far away, then if you gonna be in my phone again, but uh, I am. You'll be gonna miss her, I give you a. Oh.
Uh, I'll go, well, it's, it's been a, a fun two years getting to know you. And just um, just. How you represented the students in the college, um. Trustee Calhoun cut, pretty much covered it, but just. How you were able to be vulnerable and just speak your truth um, to the communities, to us, and to those that represent us. You should be proud of what you did and what you've taken with you and where it worked out.
One of my most memorable and proudest moments is when we work with one of our um, partners. Where you truly um, gave the insight perspective um, to one of our vendors, as well as our students representing yourself. Where you gave the insight and input, and you were able to present on our telehealth. For our students with um, mental health resources. That was very valuable. So again, proud of you, congratulations.
Congratulations, the word legacy is not something that we use often in the right context, but you truly have left a footprint here. But not just for yourself, which is so important, and thinking of who you are. You are always an advocate for others, always wanting to participate despite the many tools and challenges. You wanted to ensure that every person that comes to college, not just the student, but the staff and the faculty and the administration. Had what was best. And you always represented that across our state, Kendra was often asked by many entities throughout the state. To be a speaker, to represent not just Compton College, but all community colleges, and so again, legacy is not a light word. But for sure, you have left a legacy in your. Congratulations.
And she has, has great.
I don't know about that.
You like.
I, I would say, thank you, she, uh, Kendra Cars, for serving as our student trustee. If you recall, we had uh, she was appointed by the associate to the government, but she had always made sure to attend the meetings, and she attended Compton as well, representing students. And she's an advocate, um, she would meet with me, and any complaint or concern, I would hear it first. And uh, I, I truly appreciate that, to be able to hear the students' voice, but you were truly be missed uh, here at Compton College. And I want to say thank you for your service, to not only the students, but also to the employees, because your kind of advice of how we can change the organization is important to this. Thank you.
If you have any comments or stories.
So on the job, wherever we travel, we go out to dinner, Kendra usually picks the location. I always ask, because you know, I wanna make sure we have students first, regardless of. Would I say anything?
Oh, what can I say, I definitely appreciate everybody's perspective, this has been an actual roller coaster, and. Especially because I have the full time as well, maintaining my um, classes, speaking with the professor, and then also speaking with the staff. When I say, e- even though I'm on the actual board, the staff really help me, I really were running to their offices, harassing them, some of them know. And I'll ask them for things, and it's like, they're so busy, but they still maintain the time, and come and still work with me, and I appreciate that, because they don't have to. Even if me being a student trustee or not, they still gonna have to help me out, so definitely, I will admit everything about how. Me being a company, me speaking with everybody, me making sure that I'm helpful with the staff and the students. But I just know that I don't gonna get that anywhere else.
So now we have the, the next award is our civility champion award. I'll just give you some history about the civility champion, we worked with, it was uh, about four years ago, we established this award, worked with the Academy Senate in regards to civility objectives. And so we have this award where individuals are recognized by their peers uh, regards to civility, and be a civility champion, and it also comes with a check of a hundred dollars. Uh, we, uh, Kaiden Associates are sponsoring for this award, uh, for various ones actually, so tonight's award for the faculty civility champion award. Is Professor Susan Johnson from the Fine Arts Communication and Humanities Division. And the civility champion award for the classified is someone who always puts stuff in my calendar, and I'll say hi. Well, I should definitely, we was Microsoft Office, uh, Serac Ly, who was our human resources. I still remember when Serac was hired, she hired part-time and temporary, working human resources, helping us with COVID nineteen.
And one, two, three.
So the next award, which comes with a five hundred dollar check, goes to the distinguished administrator award, is uh, Doctor Antonio Banks. Congratulations. Congratulations, and I, you got the check, guys. Again, y'all let me solve this earlier. Uh, the next one, the distinguished faculty award, goes to our transfer and career counselor, Teresa Beragon Etteria.
Wait, hurry up. There you go. Ready, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
So the distinguished staff award goes to. Iris Fernandez. Yeah, I know Iris, um, she works at our adult education, works with the family department. And if you boy who knows Iris, she will always make you laugh.
Actually, show me my down, your picture, yeah, there you go.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
And our outstanding. Uh, adjunct faculty award is Roger Todd, who is one of our faculty members in the social science division, I don't think he's here. But we do have the uh, plaque and also a check for twenty fifty dollars. Uh, just so everyone knows, the distinguished faculty, staff, and administrator, days uh, participated in commencement to serve on the platform party, so they will also be on stage during graduation as well. And so, would I say thank you to all the winners? And the student associates providing the funds uh, for the, for the winners, thank you very much. Yeah, and now we can do a group photo of the distinguished uh, award winners, and then we do a ci- we do a civility as well.
Ready, one, two, three.
It was not a lot, too. Uh, now we created, so civility champion awards with a group photo. And as a, as a public announcement, we have cupcakes in honor of all the winners, and next door, in the next room, so we grab a cupcake, and Sylvie said they're pretty good.
And after um. Our recognition, we are now at. Item nine. Request to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda item matters. Nine point oh two of nine. Do we have any request to address the board?
Leaving Travis Mendez. On a non-agenda item, the investment short of over yet.
So um, greetings for trustees. And all of our winners today as well, um, so I'm coming to the board as myself, I've been David Chavez Mendez, a professor of history, and I think studies for Compton College. Um, so I know there's a lot, been a lot of uh, discussion in the news since our line had bring this up here as well, and right now, we're in the midst of colleges and universities, and this is, are in the midst of a historic social movement. Rights for free speech, uh, and the push to ban the genocide in Gaza. Uh, and it's for genocide, should not be controversial, but instead back for it, uh, as an historian, I teach my students to read the law of convention and convention. And punishment of the ground genocide, which passed in nineteen fifty one by the United Nations. And uh, just recently, the International Court of Justice delivered an interim judgment uh, that went to South Africa. Who called uh, uh, for this, one key paragraph from the ruling rule. Uh, that, uh, in the court's view, the facts and circumstances of what's happening in Gaza, by example, is real or sufficient to conclude that at least some of the rights claimed by South Africans. And for which it is CP protection are plausible, so the possible case of genocide is, uh, before us, this is sort of, this is sort of moved by the um, court. So what does that have to do with us, right, so faculty, students, and peoples. Um, right here, Long Beach, uh, Cal State Long Beach, my alma mater, UCLA, uh, some of our other alma maters influence from UCI, Houston Riverside. Um, are calling for a ceasefire and the right of self-determination of Palestinians peoples, specifically, they're calling for the investment of funds that aid, like, and the US-funded Israeli military. Uh, way to see before eyes, so I want to remind the board trustees of board policy six three two nine. Uh, which states clearly that, quote, the president CEO is responsible for ensuring that the funds of the district are invested. Um, that are not required for immediate needs of the districts. Investment shall be in accordance with the law, and investment shall be made based on the following criteria, I'm just gonna let name the third criteria. Which is that transactions should be avoided that might impair public confidence. So I think it's very important for us to ensure that we are on the right side of history, it's very important, that our um, that our portfolio represents the values of our, of our college, and also the rights and values of our students. So I implore the board to investigate the investment portfolio of the district, ensure that our campus, as I said already, right side of history. And is in solidarity with all the students and uh, university professors who are not able to have a graduation this year in Gaza, fourteen universities have been destroyed. Um, and so our colleagues, who are also, uh, many of them trained here in the United States, are no, are not, are unable to have a graduation this year. Uh, because of what's uh, what's what transpired here, so I wanted to go ahead and say that to the board, and as an employee of the college, as well, and speak for the board, and just ask well to. So remind you of the board policy. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Lineal Williams. Non-agenda item, AI.
Hello, members of the board. If I had a title, it'd be called Even AI Knows Better. There are times when you must come to terms with the role of your call to fill in life. As I participated in the business of this institution over the last seven years, I've been impressed by the development of the board of trustees to advocate on behalf of the district. And assist in establishing a climate in which high standard to maintain and institutional goals are accomplished. However, on the last item of the board duties and responsibilities under BP two two hundred, they've struggled mightily. This is because it states that they have to respect the authority of the district president CEO to manage the day-to-day affairs of the district. And to oversee the work of district personnel in the appropriate, appropriate performance of their duties only. They can only provide direction and guidance. But a person can only provide direction and guidance towards information that's been shared with them. And institutions are pretty good at keeping their parents from learning about their supply in their sock drawer. Make no mistake about it, that little twenty sack hidden away is maintaining a high for this organization like none I've seen before. The tactics, strategies, and policy mechanisms used on me are at the level of someone trying to maintain political office. So how can this be? If the only politicians on this platform oversee trustee areas, one of these things is not like the other. Our president CEO should embody the characteristics of an executive-level academician and educator. But instead, each representative body of this organization is faced with engaging a seasoned politician. Fixated on securing his next term, little more housing, how about a medical facility on campus? For seven years, I've only tried to do my job. When Dean Rodney Murray retired, you would have thought the gates had been left open for attack. This was followed by the hiring of Vice President Sherry Burger, who very clearly reported the following to me. I've spoken with Lawrence Cincino, Peter Parnoff, and Doctor Curry. These are the problems they're telling me you have. I need you to understand that I'm here to do Doctor Curry's bidding. This was about a week after her first day, and she was upheld, and she has upheld her end of this pronouncement for the last four years. So then why don't you just leave the college? Well, have you ever tried to leave a place that you feel you're supposed to be at? A few weeks ago, I was at a conference, and I was introduced to ChatGPT. And uh, I decided to enter the following prompt in its search bar. What tactics and strategies are used by institutions to silence their authorities looking to help change the institution for the better? ChatGPT gave me the following. Institutions may employ various tactics to silence employees who seek to bring about change within the organization. Some common strategies include isolation, marginalization, press intimidation, gaslighting, and discrediting selective enforcement of policies creating a cultural fear. Cooptation, leaking administrative barrier, public relations tactics. I asked the board to look into my personnel file, and you can do a match comparison to every item that I stated. Thank you.
Item nine point oh two. Content community college district board of trustees, future agenda items request. All the members, do we have? Do you have any request for future agenda, if you do, then trustee Karen. Doctor Look. None. Trustee Drable.
No future items.
Trustee Romo.
No.
President Barbara Calhoun.
President Barbara Kellman. Item ten. Board of trustees, meeting minutes. Minutes of the April sixteen twenty two. Board. The trustees meeting, can I have a motion? Can I have a motion in a second? Do we have any discussions? Do the trustee corners? Dr. Little?
No discussions.
Trust me, Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trust me, Roberts?
No discussion.
President Kellman, no discussion. See no discussion, please place your online vote. I'm sorry. Item eleven, report from representatives and employee organization. Eleven point oh one, associate student government report, Chris O'Money.
Hi Mr. O'Moni. Good afternoon, board. It is um an honor and privilege to have served under the pride of first of all those. Um I will be graduating. Thank you, um well, if you're looking for, I uh wouldn't be here without guys. Um that that felt out a lot, like they're always listening through your body and I appreciate you guys um for your services. Um I have nothing to report, I will, I got A and B on the same. Um but thank you again for allowing me to uh serve you guys like your A and B members and. It was a great year.
So in eleven point oh two, academic and student board. Good evening, board of trustees, Dr. Curry, I'd like to start with a brief quote by the uh great Chaperone of LA. The fact is no accident, it is hard work, perseverance, burning, studying, sacrifice and most of all love of what you are doing or learned to do so. So I, I want to give one more round of applause to my colleagues from the different constituents who can on campus that will recognize me for the love of what they do here at Compton College. I have a, a short list of items that I would like to update the board of trustees on what's going on with our summit and the faculty on our campus. Uh number one is common course, as you may know, uh there was legislation passed that. We're now the three higher education uh systems in California working to align curriculum. The first fifteen courses were the lessons that are the first ones to um work on providing or um design with common course numbering. They are two courses from English, English conversation and uh critical reading writing. Uh public speaking from the communication studies department. Uh we have MAC one fifty, which is statistics, omen of department, political science, there'll be political science, psychology course. And uh psych, psychology. And we have our first faculty, for each one of these disciplines will be attending a webinar about upcoming public people for updates from them and do how that went. Uh luckily, the chancellor is obviously providing some conversation for them. Uh because the webinar will be five hours long, so we feel very limited of their time, so we're very grateful for, for being willing to do that. Um the summit is still working on our last week policies for the semester, we have one last summit meeting left of the final week. So I will provide my last update and as you know, my turn is coming to one end, so I will be with you one more time in June. And after that, I will be seeing you when I see you. Um there was some good news from, from the chancellors or from the state uh regarding all the our educational resources that providing three uh grant opportunities for colleges to apply to. Uh they're calling them a further free instructional material that I think our college needs to make a concerted effort to tap into. But to meet our goal of having that maybe five to one hundred percent OBR reliance uh for all of our courses by the year twenty thirty five. Um we had, my colleague with the communication study department, Professor Lee Balneo took a number of our students to a teaching debate tournament recently. And as per usual, when they participate, they came back with, with medals and with ignitions for speaker awards. And we're very, very happy with the work that she's doing in that organization of the A course. We're also in the process of hiring a third uh full-time faculty for the communication study department. Which is always going to help us be stronger and provide, you know, better quality instruction in our department and actually the college, so we're grateful for that. Um as you know, we have the sheer government consultants who've been talking to all of the uh constituents of campus that were, were very excited to have early four come out this Thursday. Um just reminding everyone to attend that so they could hear it firsthand from the consultants themselves. Also, the, the consultants who are working on the point, the master plan, they started their resume session, they had the first one today. A couple more coming up, one part of here invited to participate as well, so we're grateful for the opportunity to um provide our experience and our input into what's coming uh at Compton College. Um aside from that, I'm just looking forward to all of the special events coming up on our campus. Uh that are leading up to the main commencement ceremony on the seventh, I look forward to seeing a lot of new participating, uh thank you for making this possible.
CCCF certificated employee board.
No, 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 giving some uh, some visuals certainly, yeah. So uh I'd like to present a couple of visuals to the board and again, thank you all for being here, uh board of trustees. At Dr. Curry, um and, and my colleagues and uh co-authors here. Uh I think as well as our, I saw a bunch of students here, so it's great that they can see the participation of. Uh public meetings, the way democracy works in a workplace like this and in a, in a public institution. So um we have met, uh we as the, the federation, uh the faculty team here that are the librarians, part-time and full-time faculty counselors. Um our, uh our coaches and uh, uh you know, the, the, the bulk of, of our educational workers on campus. Who work in, who work in combination and decide and solve and in the, in. In connection with our classified staff, admin staff, right, and you're definitely a big part, and obviously our students too. Um so we have met with the, uh with the district's bargaining team uh over five times this semester. Uh to work towards completing our successor agreement. Uh we made some progress, um and by we, I mean we, we have uh, uh shared and um in writing. Proposals to finish our successor agreements. Uh the district has also provided uh some responses as well. Um and uh I do want, and overall what I want to do is emphasize today, something I said actually back in uh, in, in the fall, when I took this position as vice president. To speak to the board of trustees as part of my duties, one of the things I did was I handed out a, a packet uh done by the uh, the CFT, the American Federation of Teachers, California. Local around the inequity in terms of our economic situation here as faculty. Uh whether it be our uh, our part-time faculty, our uh, our faculty who teach in vocational trades. Our, our faculty who uh need the minimum qualifications to, to start working here for um, for teaching or counseling. Uh which is a master's degree or for those who have gone up the educational ladder, moved uh into getting doctorates or other additional degrees. Provide student support and create a positive learning environment for our students. And so what I want to do is to show something that um, uh in the situation we have at the table currently, so you all get an idea of where we're at and. And so implore the board of trustees to uh, to uh, to direct the, the bargaining team uh by the uh, of the district to bargain a good thing. So right here and all, everyone can see. Uh it says the LA County Community College District comparisons based on the minimum qualifications of an enemy on our salary schedules. These are all the, the data from the thirteen community college districts. Uh based on the step one starting salary, what goes out in our job posts for minimum qualifications. Uh for an enemy uh to teach in our classes, to be a counselor. And we're right here in the red, we are a dead last out of uh thirteen community college districts. Uh compared to our colleagues all across LA County, I'm assuming it's LA County, and I must remind everybody that the LA city and the Long Beach metro area. Is the sixth most expensive place to live in the United States or their, their urban placement inside. So um this is where we're at, this is uh why we're, um and I'll show the, the uh, the camera right there too, so our. Our public can also see and my colleagues here, this red right here represents where we're at in ourselves. Uh compared to all the other districts that were on the bottom thirteen. And so this is where we're starting, our um, as a part, only part of our economic demands for an equitable workplace. For a workplace that allows us to serve our students completely and allows us to have the focus here on Compton College and not have to um be worried about being uh what financial. Experts call uh being rent burdened because of the, the low wages and the high cost of living, um the inflation expenses. Uh as well as the uh. The need for many of our faculty to go across uh to, to look. Uh for part-time uh positions um and other, uh other facilities or at other institutions. And I'll, I'll provide an email with all these in a, in a more clear uh graph for everyone to see. So uh everyone will get an email after today's meeting that shows this, in case you thought I'd be allowed. Yeah, I don't want, you know, I know that, I know it's a little bit uh isolated and then that's our bad, because they're gonna get a high risk, high risk picture. So what I'm gonna show next is the current offer uh on the table, uh the compounded uh salary schedule offered by the districts. Where the district is offering, it has been offering since uh, since May of last year, it has had some movement, uh not in a percentage. For the salary schedule, but um additional movements to different economic aspects, you have to acknowledge that, that's what the bargaining that the district's team has, has done. Um um and also offered a uh, a one-time second for uh those faculty members who are in a doctorate or already have a doctorate. Uh but in terms of what that actually looks like for our salary schedule and where we're at. It still leaves us uh for the, for this fiscal year, the twenty-three, twenty-four, that it leaves us at twelve out of thirteen. It only moves us up one more space. Um um and only surpassing Citrus College in terms of starting salary. And why is this important? When our job offers go out, um the competitive salary is an important factor in this economic time. For people to make a decision of whether or not to join our amazing workforce here, our amazing team here, faculty. Um uh and then and uh, and people, but educators here on campus, counselors like that, hopefully. And so um, this for us is a very hard sell because for us as the um. Um as a union, we make our decisions democratically. So uh we have to have our membership vote fifty percent plus one, our goal is to always have eighty percent or more on people to approve our contracts. And right now, what's offered at the table still leaves us at the very, you know, first at very bottom. Uh when compared to other LA County uh community college starting salary schedules. Um for the MA um at the beginning, this is even lower or I'm with this chart doesn't show. Is also the lower starting point for our vocational uh trade of faculty. Uh which we know that has been very hard to fill on our campus. Um and one of the leading reasons because of the cost of living in the, again, LA, Long Beach metro area and um the uh. The, the lack of movement on our, on our salaries. So. Uh the last thing I'm gonna show is that three visuals here. Is what our, uh with the faculty offer on the table is what we've been pushing and we have come down in our, in, uh we have made some movement. We started off with a hire proposal on our compensation article and we've actually come down to try to in good faith demonstrate to the. College that we want to work with the college uh to figure this out, to write, to, to have a salary schedule that meets our needs, our uh, the needs of, basic needs of. Uh of living standards here in LA. Um but also to make us competitive to recruit the, the, to recruit new folks, uh highest qualified and the most excited to work with our students. As well as honor those faculty, um some of the uh members that awards today who have worked by ten, fifteen, twenty years now. And so this is where our offer moves us to. We go from number uh thirteen all the way up to number eight. So the red is, is where we would go if, if uh the district were to accept our salary schedule. Um proposal. And we believe this makes us more competitive, it's on the way towards uh sort of becoming a, you know, competitive. Uh with the, uh with the rest of the, with the rest, with the rest of the town. Um and we believe that this is uh, that this is a good starting point to move us towards, uh you know, the, the giant task we have as faculty. And they were constantly told that we should be putting in work to do and which we do. Which is to serve our student population, which is to fight for equity of uh and diversity in the classroom. And be champions of civility and of uh. Of student, uh student success, earnings. So again, this is where the red little bar graph is where we would, we would move if the district were to accept our offer today. Uh we would become more competitive, we would also honor the uh, the work and labor of our faculty on campus. And when those job announcements go out, again, this will help us recruit the um. The applicants who uh who can come and serve our students, um and again, honor the folks that we have here already. It keeps us competitive and it keeps us also, I mean it. It would be, keeps our faculty with the ability to focus here on our campus as well. Uh it would allow many of our colleagues to not have to work on multiple jobs, it would also allow um many of our faculty to. Um for some to finally make a decision to expand their families because of how expensive it is to raise children here in LA County, Long Beach, it's not something new, I have some kiddos myself. Um and uh or those who want to adopt, or those who want to uh, to purchase a home, those who want to um. Uh advance in their uh, in their homeland, right? And more than anything, those who want to um feel like they're our, uh they're working and respected here by the district as well. Um and not have to uh constantly see their colleagues across the county, but even beyond the county, uh in Orange County, for example, or other parts of the state. Uh having their uh, their cost of living adjusted to the polar, cost of living adjustments. Um so um I say all this uh because this is just one aspect of our entire economic articles that we're fighting for at the table. And we're, and we're in dialogue and discussion and coming in good faith with the district. Um because we also have our demands around health insurance. Um additionally around um a release time, a reassign time, uh and. Another economic articles uh that allow us to uh again, serve the students the best of our time. So ultimately, my, my, my final update as uh from our report today. Is that we want a fair offer at the table. Uh and specifically, I am, I'm really happy to see that the five-year fiscal management plan that's on the board agenda today, uh board agenda item eighteen point three. Um it's been updated to show that the projections have changed for the ending funding balance, who have a reserve of thirty-five point eight percent. Um in January, when the district shared their numbers when we started our offer, um they were projecting um and what they should with the union. Uh of only having a thirteen point one percent uh reserve and that's, I know that was also the Spencer at the board, I mean, we've got those numbers here. And so since this has changed, I think that should also be reflected in the bargaining sections that we continue to have with the district. Uh now that we have this new update, we have a better idea of where we're headed, at least in this fiscal year, we know that. Um things are happening at the state level and the federal level, again, because of the divestment. Uh that education has been going through for the last thirty years because of neoliberalism. Um to try to financialize the uh, the education system, whether it's on page twelve, us in community college, in the UC system, in my lifetime alone, I've seen. Uh the, the astronomical um fees being burdened on students as well as the increase in um, in part-time faculty. As opposed to being able to fund full-time faculty salaries, multiple of our, of our folks who are trained with masters and PhDs and multiple degrees having to be what's called pre-lead flyers. I'm assuming some of us here even here on this, uh the board of trustees may uh may have done this in, in yourself, if you've ever, you know, had any topic or, or some of our other folks here as well. So uh, again, I'm just imploring that uh we have good faith bargaining and that the district now with these new numbers comes to the table. Um and also looks at this and understands uh that our economic articles can be respected. And that us as a, us as workers should be offered a dignified proposal. And ultimately, what is all this do? I keep talking about recruitment because our goal is to service our students the best that we can. Our, our uh, our work environment is our students' learning environment. And being at the bottom isn't filthy. Being at the bottom um doesn't, uh doesn't show and for us from our perspective as the, as a federation of uh faculty. Doesn't show an investment in our students' uh success. Um we have it in other areas, no doubt, on our campus. Uh we have it definitely in the work ethic of our, of our colleagues and colleagues here, those who were awarded today and those who were, who've been awarded in the past. Uh, we have it definitely in the work ethic of our, of our colleagues and colleagues here, those who are awarded today and those who were, who've been awarded in the past. Um, those of us who are gonna show up, um, on, uh, on graduation in a couple of weeks. Those of us who are working with our students, uh, beyond our work hours to ensure that they pass their classes, that we spend extra time, we meet them during their office hours or beyond our office hours time. Um, that show up every day, um, and teach students, not only, um, here on campus, but our nursing faculty who goes and trains the next, uh. The next generation of nurses and health workers, um, in a, in an industry that, uh, has largely, you know, health, the health industry has largely been. And negligent in supporting African-American, Latino and, and low-income, um, Angelinos. But we have the ability to change that because the work that we do and my colleagues do. Um, as well as our, uh, our, our dual enrollment faculty that can sell, uh, but definitely others who, who are working. To support young people, um, give them opportunity to get their AA by the time they graduate high school. Lower the rent, uh, lower the burden of, uh, of, uh, financial burden on their families to be able to have success for, uh, for their future. Uh, whether it be for Compton Unified, Paramount, Inviter, then when you define new work. So I, I say all this is to demonstrate that we are, we are very much interested in continuing to talk to the district, we're, we're looking to come to the table and dedicate. Uh, but what we have in front of us right now is, is, um, it doesn't show where we think the values of the district should be at, and we're interested in continuing to talk. Um, and push for that, because we, we believe you deserve that for us as faculty and so do our students, so. Thank you all very much, I appreciate your time.
Number four, or C, 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 every classified, of course, before. So now it is time for presentations. And we have twelve point oh one, Compton College Upward Bound Math and Science Program. The courage. Thank you all.
So I would like to have, uh, my friends who call in.
Sorry, uh, good evening, Board of Trustees, President Curry, um, I would like to introduce Sochi. She is going to present on our upward bound program, we also are going to recognize our students this evening, so welcome.
Hello everyone, good evening. I'm excited to be here to hear our, our, uh, up into our program, I'm the program manager for upward bound math and science. And today we're gonna cover what is trio. Our Compton College Upward Bound Math and Science Program, our five-year data, and our success stories with our three-year. So we're gonna talk a little bit about what is trio, why is it called trio, it's because they were born with the start of three programs. That has been expanded into over eight programs. So all the way to twelve trio, there are eight programs under the trio, and they were developed in nineteen seventy-five. By President Lyndon Johnson's War on Poverty. All trio programs are designed to motivate and support students from disadvantaged backgrounds. And to supplement their existing education at the schools and prepare them for success at all educational levels. So our current program at Compton College is funded through a five-year grant cycle. Our first year of the current cycle started last year in September. One, twenty-two, and we are funded all the way up to August thirty-first, twenty-seven. And over the next five years, we would have, we will have a million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand and five. Over the next five years, um, which we are funded through. And we are designed to provide support to fifty-two Compton students. And we are at three high schools, the three high schools are Compton High School, Dominion High School, and Centennial High School. And with these fifty-two students, we help them recognize and develop their own potential and their success. And let them excel in math and science. And to also encourage them to pursue post-secondary degrees in math and science or in any STEM fields. And ultimately, help them choose a career in the profession. So we are funded through the Department of Education and we have certain requirements that we do have to follow in our program. There are three requirements, one is to be a US citizen or permanent resident of the United States. The next one is to be a first-gen college, uh, college student, meaning neither parent has a bachelor's degree. And the third one is to be from a low-income family, meaning that the family's income won't succeed, or sorry, won't exceed a hundred and fifty percent. Of the federal trio income level. And our, uh, breakdown of our students in the high school. So we currently have fifty-two students that we serve, probably fifty-four. And sixteen come from Dominion's High School, seventeen from Centennial, and nineteen are from Compton High School. And then we also have them broken down by gender. Twenty students are males in our program and there are two are females in our program. The next slide will show race and ethnicity, so forty-nine percent of our students are Hispanic or Latino or identify as that. And three of our students identify as Black or African-American. The next one, we'll be talking about our services through our program. First one is one-on-one academic evaluation, so we go to the school sites weekly to meet with our students. We also offer tutoring both at the site and online to do with our students. We also have Saturday and Fridays when we meet with our students once a month on Compton College campus. And with these activities, um, during our academy, we have interactive workshops for our students, field trips, and we also have college and university tours. We also have parent workshops for our families that are currently supporting our students, our parents and guardians, so we have workshops for our parents four times throughout the year. And lastly, the greatest piece of our program, which is our summer program, which is the six-week long summer program that we hold for our students. The first five of those weeks, we are at Compton College. And the last six weeks, we stay overnight with our students at a university. This year, we will be taking our students to UCF, obviously, to the, for. And with the revamp of our beautiful new building, we're able to give students a collaborative working space. So when you have our students come for tutoring, or at the workshops, or you have parents come by. We have this space to have our students work on their assignments or anything that we're currently speaking on during our workshops or behind the, the, the news in the academic year. And we also have, uh, tutoring quiet rooms, independent quiet rooms for our students. So as I mentioned, we do also offer tutoring for our students. Here on campus, at the school site, and online we can do, and we have set spaces for our students to utilize as well. And we believe that all these different components, components of our program. Creates student success, so with the help of Saturday academy, academic advising at the sites, tutoring, parent workshops, and our summer program. We're able to set up our students for success. And the best part of our program about all these services are completely free for our students, so all of our fifty-two students. They'll have to pay me to be part of our program, which I believe is the best part, they're able to receive all these services. The next slides, we're gonna talk about our program objectives. So our program does have seven objectives that are set by the Department of Education. And the data that you'll see on the next slides are the previous year's data, so twenty-two to twenty-three. And every year, we submit a, I know, performance report to the Department of Ed to show them. How we are dealing with our objectives and how we're meeting our objectives. So objectives one through four measure the current number of students served. Object, objectives five through six measure our high school graduates graduating class of twenty-two and three, which are current seniors. And objective seven measures the high school graduate of twenty-seventeen. So we actually track our students for the next six years after they graduate to see how far they are along with their degree completion. So our first, um, slide is eligibility criteria, so the benchmark is at sixty-six point sixty-seven. Of our participants are low-income and first gen, and we can see that our outcome is ninety-five percent of our students. Are first gen and low incomes in our program. The next one is UBMS, our program is funded to serve fifty-two students that are here. And as you can see, we actually serve fifty-six participants, so we're able to serve a little bit more than, um. We haven't seen it in the past. The next one is our academic performance benchmark. So seventy, the benchmark is that ninety percent of our students will receive a two-point-five GPA or higher at the end of their school year. And we can see that ninety-five percent of our students meet that goal of having a two-point-five or higher at the back of the screen. The next one is academic performance on standardized testing. The benchmark that is said is at twenty-five percent of our current senior level. Will achieve proficient level on state assessment in reading, language, and math. So we can see that our outcome is thirty-three percent. And we believe the reason why, um, it has gone down over the last two years is because of COVID. So our students are only testing in either tenth or eleventh grade, and do have the option of opting or opting out of testing. And some of these students either only tested in tenth or eleventh. And are, and something important to note is that our outcome for the benchmark is that our students will pass both English and math. And the actuality for our students is that sometimes they are, are only proficient in one or the other. But unfortunately, the benchmark is for students to have both, so that's why we believe it's not the best that we can hope. Next one is secondary school retention and graduation. Meaning that ninety-six of our students, ninety-six percent of our students will move on from one year to the next. So ninth to tenth, eleventh to twelfth, and we see here. That a hundred percent of them move on from one year to the next and receive their high school diploma. Fifth is secondary school graduation rigorous study, which is basically their AICL G's, making sure they met their AICL G's. The benchmark is at fifty percent, fifty-six percent of our seniors complete the rigorous performance, rigorous secondary school program of study. And the outcome is that actually a hundred percent of our students can complete that, which is the AICL G. This is post-secondary enrollment, so the benchmark is sixty percent of our seniors. Will enroll in a post-secondary education immediately after graduating high school. And our benchmark, or our outcome is at seventy-three percent of our seniors. Graduate high school and enroll in a post-secondary institution. Number seven, the last one, is where we track our students for the sixth year, so this is class of twenty-seventeen. So the benchmark is at thirty-five percent of our participants. Who enrolled in a program of study immediately after high school. Have, uh, received either an associate's degree or bachelor's degree in the, in the next six years fol- following, uh, graduation from high school. And our outcome is thirty-eight percent of our students, um. Who graduated immediately going to post-secondary, complete their bachelor's or their sorority within the following six years. And the last but not least, I wanted to congratulate our current students who are graduating from high school. Some of them weren't able to be here with us today, and we also have some families as well. But I wanted to take the opportunity to have some of these students come up, share where they're going, and receive a certificate. So, uh.
We had a warrant go this way.
Do you wanna have them come in, I say, they color in. So not all of our students were able to come with us today, but I still want to acknowledge, acknowledge them. So one of our seniors, seniors is Mia, she was raised in the UCF with us today, she is. And then who we do have here with us today is, for example, she had committed to going to CSU University. We can do better than that.
So we're gonna give everybody, right? Are you, are we gonna do individual photos, because I'm gonna have to keep going at a time, okay? So Chi, are you good?
One, two, three. Next, we have Lava Luve, who isn't here with us today, but she has committed to going to UCLA. Who has come in today is Miss Ashley Galudo, she has committed to going to CSU Long Beach. Thank you. And next, we have Pritargo, who has committed to going to CSU Bulletin. One, two, one, two, and. Wasn't able to be here with us today, but she has committed to going to Compton College and doing some research. And who we do have with us today is Miss Hillary Martinez, who has committed to going to CSU Long Beach. On my penis, we'll be going to UC Irvine.
Congratulations.
Right there, number three. Thank you. Salvador Martinez, who has committed to going to CSU Bulletin. So Chi, who, I'm there, says Long Beach, but she actually had a change of heart, and is now going to commit to going to CSU Dominguez. We have Jonathan Nunez, who wasn't able to be with us today, but he has committed to going to Surrano's College. And who we do have with us today is Alejandro Orozco, who has committed to going to CSU Long Beach. We have, uh, Miss Evelyn Williams, who has committed to going to CSU Bulletin. Wasn't able to be here today, but he has committed to going to, to, I believe, Fullerton. Cal State Long Beach. I think all of our current graduates, who were so excited to continue to support throughout the program. And we're so happy to be here. So families on the phone are able to be here so very happy.
All right. So I'm probably going to need Dorit and, uh, please send the D T back. For home. And all right, you guys take that. Yes. All right. So your certificate is not the important part. I just need to be able to see your face. And I need you guys to be centered around this corner. So if we want to have some people start shooting this way. And student is going to take two lines to get your everybody in. All ready? If you want to put your certificate down for a second, we will figure it out. Don't you want the boardman behind us? Some of them might be taller than our four numbers. The gentleman who are taller, you could be a back row starting next to Kendra. You guys will put them down. We will get them back to you. And then Bill and, oh, we'll stand up. All the way to the screen, you guys. I got a couple more there. So that's perfect. And we're going to be a little program manager. So she. All right. There's room, right is room, right in front of Kendra. Ready, one. Sure, supportive gentleman. Easy does it, easy. Wrong shoes, right? Wrong shoes. Ready, one, two, three. Ready, one, two, three. Five, twelve. Okay. Congratulations. So proud, so proud. Congratulations.
All right. Any board member have any questions about upward? Matt decides what. Do you interrupt me, John?
So we've partnered with different schools on Monday, so that higher education coordinators. Just tell us when they have equal hours. I'm sorry, back to school night. So we go back to school night. We also partner with the parent centers on campus. I mean, we have a faculty principal to speak to parents. And we also partnered with Dr. Knox at the, uh, district to be able to also have our program demographic. We're glad that our demographics in our, at our school sector. So maybe we'll write and then we can also speak to teachers on classroom, do classroom presentations, we go off at school, we get out the full programs and speak with them. But usually at the meeting with the students, we are, we're, we're, by the members, this with our grad, uh, guidelines and guidelines that you won't have to end it. So you can start in. That's the director of the Black Student Leadership Center at. And then you guys, three percent of African-American students who are with the part. Three students identified as Black. I think it's about five point something. I think it's three students. Yeah, three out of fifty two.
Uh, Dr. Little.
Okay. I, I did have a question about the numbers and the recruitment. Do we have the data on the demographic to be in the school? And then when, following up on Dennis' question, it was three out of fifty two, but that equates to about five percent of Black students. Um, ninety four percent. So do we have any additional ethnic groups represented?
So we go by what students identify as and how much power they then.
So you guys know, like, Asian, Seminole, or you have other groups that comprise the student body.
So we have that as options for students to, um, check out and we don't.
Okay. And then another question that I have is under the completion rate. It, with the thirty eight percent, it says either an A A or a V A after six years. Have we? Have we, the secondary completion is? By twenty two. By twenty two. We, we think it benchmark, but I'm wondering, are we looking at what are the factors? What, what are students studying with? Are they going to the workforce? Are they just, uh, you know, continuing to take classes beyond six years? They're not completed during that time. What are we tracking?
So we are, what we're tracking is completion of either A A or their bachelor's degree. And we do try to take hold of them every single year so we can see where they're at. Unfortunately, sometimes we can't reach them. Either the phone number changes, their email changes that they shared with us. And most of the time, when we get a hold of a student, of, of a specific student, it could be a variety of things. A lot of students decided after COVID or because of COVID, I decided not to. And sometimes students do decide to just continue on and just go into the workforce and not continue on into their, uh, continue to take classes. To be for us, for us to be able to say that they have completed their A A or their bachelor's degree. So it's just a variety of things depending on the student situation. And we try to again, reach out to them and continue to need that support for them. But sometimes it's just either they have changed their number or got nervous or their email changes and we can't reach them directly.
Okay. So we're having seventy three percent enrolled, the thirty eight percent versus.
Right. So the seventy three enrolled is for students, our current students who are graduating and immediately going into a post-secondary after high school. And this specific idea is the class of twenty seventeen. So that is six years back. Of students who enrolled in a post-secondary, but either did not continue or knocked out.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just final questions. The, the requirement, and maybe this is beyond this conversation, for trio to be first generation?
Right.
Because we're seeing a lot of families who are nothing, their children are going to school. And so this automatic, your parents can't have your degree. There's a huge cutoff because financially, there's still a lot of people with degrees who are suffering and whose children don't qualify and they're working every day. Because they pursued education generationally. So I'm wondering, it's more hypothetical. What can be done to remedy that? Because I know a lot of studies are showing certain communities, for example, in the Black community, education is pushed a lot and self-careers have undergraduate degrees, their children are not qualifying for such programs. But yet, by the answer, it's a burden for them to attend school because they're not qualified. So I think it would be an interesting conversation for us to look at. Thank you so much. And report and congratulations to the students. Do you have the more? Um, yes. Again, thank you. Um, congratulations to the students that showed appearance and, and their families as well. Um, so I would like to, um, so the selection process with the number of students, is it just first come, first served on the students that are eligible? With the application process, it's like first and first or? And you are reaching out to, what was the faculty again that you are using for recruitment?
For Dr. Knox. We use a variety of folks, uh, state colleges on campus. Dr. Knox is just one in our, um, list. We also work with the parent centers, some of them on the school sites. And then we also work with the higher education coordinators at the school sites. Along with other folks such as teachers who have recommendations. If students have recommendations, we follow all those areas to be able to get students to go in our program.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then also like on slide number eighteen, you mentioned, um, the number, um, the number is uh, possibly low because students are opting out of those.
State testing?
Uh huh. Of those state testings. Okay. So that is why the thirty eight and then continuing down onto the thirty three or twenty two, twenty three?
We can't say for sure that anybody does, but it could be a reason why. And again, the benchmark is for students to pass both English and math. And most of our students will have either fourth and not fourth.
Just a couple more questions, not ones I'm going to bring. So the focus of the, um, so the focus of the program, is it really for those students that are, um, interested in STEM-related fields? That have, um, major requirements of say like math, English, and science? Or is it really, because I know you said that it's a variety of programs. Is it more of like exposing those students to the college experience? Or is it a focus on those degrees that are in relating into those fields?
So our specific program, at a trio, there's a variety, and those folks have different, uh, objectives. And our specific program is to help our students get an idea of what is out there in STEM fields. So some of our students already know that if that's what you want to do. And some of our students are interested, and then I don't know what that is, um, can you tell me a little bit more? And that's what we do. We try to help them explore and get them, um, adjust, not adjusted, but.
Exploratory. That's good. I mean, I'm okay with that. Um, thank you for that clarification. And also like with the number of students that are in the program, are they also participating in other programs as well that we're offering? Because I know we have a lot of other, so are they, you know, more than, you know, participating in more than one program?
So at our school sites, we do have other trio programs. And it, it's a requirement that they cannot be in other trio programs, because essentially they would be seeing similar services. We want to be able to have, uh, those services help other students. So they cannot be in another trio program, but the exception is in E A O P, retailing, um, E A O P program. And a lot of students are also able to be in Europe.
So they're, so they can be in E A O P as in Europe?
E A O P. E, E A O P.
E A O P?
Yes.
And Europe. Correct. So those are things, those are two other programs that they are allowed to participate in. But they are not allowed to participate in other trio programs. And what do you do? What are you doing to ensure that that is, that those students are not, uh, that there's not a problem with G S L stuff?
So yeah, we have a tracking system with the higher education coordinators that we go through every fall, every spring. And I go to help with the higher education coordinators. They have a list of every student who is in program. Because we also have a trio to make sure that they are not in, in cross programs.
Okay. And just, I swear, this is my last question. And when the students, um, and I know you said it was like six years because you're tracking them after when they're done. So what is, so like when students, when they begin and before they transition, if you don't know this, that's fine. But like, how long is it taking them when they, when they begin here as like a high schooler? If they're getting their associate's degree or they're doing a moment? How many semesters and how long is it taking them before they, um, transition to your university or college?
We don't have that data. Uh, we go through the national class, which just allows you to see if they're in school or if they've been done. Either they're in school, yes or no, or yes, they don't do their. Which is either a bachelor or a bachelor's. So we don't have any, we don't have a lot.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Thank you. Just your roles.
Um, for, for eligibility requirements, that's just set by the federal revenue. That's all I have. And I'll, the board already answered your questions ahead. Uh, thank you for the presentation.
Some swan. I know we've passed the future. And Dr. Currie, um, we would like a report on why this is so wrong and what are we missing? That we are not. We can add American students.
Well, I, I think you could follow that up with ours to what the data has been the last three to five years. Regardless of our program for this next, and then also put over there the problems. And what the strategies that was looking at or better, something for the board just needs for the next movement.
So I just have one question. I want to make, I'm just not computing my, on, on page eight. When you say three. You have three students? Three students, three students. Oh, yes. See, that's, that's my issue. So we. What are we doing to take that type of information out of you? Does the early college have anything to do? Okay. So the early college, the ones that are going to don't qualify for the.
So under, can you go back to the slide with, to see the school site that's included in that, right? Yeah, it does not include the early college. That's okay.
Oh, okay.
So they were not included on that.
Okay. So they, they could have been included in the grant.
That would have to be a new grant proposal because under our distinction, these are the schools that we have, that have been under upper bound math science program. To add your early college, we had a new credit proposal we had to submit.
Okay. So has anybody ever thought to maybe add the early college? To, to the, I'm, I'm saying right now because you already did it. I'm not, but whenever the grant comes up again, has anybody ever thought about adding the early college to the program?
We thought about it. I mean, when you go back and go back with the history of that, I think it went off top of my head. But when you go back and look at that, we go to, we also thought about Linwood, we thought about Paramount, we thought about North Monmouth. And we had conversations and we did a data, we had submitted one before, but I, I didn't go back and look into what happened to early.
I'm just talking about early college. I understand Linwood and all of them. Don't talk about early college.
Talk about your history.
There you go. I mean, I'm not taking anything away from their history, but early colleges in my history, and I just feel like you doesn't make any difference what I hear about that. It's the learning, building up the ability, is the knowledge and gaining knowledge. Same thing. That word. And I want to thank you for your report and thank you to all.
Sorry, um, President, may I ask another question?
No, you cannot. We've asked you all already. We go on.
So the number, since, since, uh, since, uh, number eight, because I know it's, you said, so the program allows us to do fifty two. But you, we also serve fifty six students, I think, I believe. Fifty four.
Fifty four, fifty six, believe in life, so I'm sorry, stop.
Okay.
All we tried very, very hard for that to be to the line. And trying to just bumble out that way, we were able to serve more than fifty two.
So this is the completion, right? Okay.
I just think that during the presentation, going back to the statistics, I think you stated forty nine percent of the students, but it was forty nine students, not forty nine percent. That's where I was studying. It's ninety four percent. Thirty five percent African-American. And that's why I was asking for the data from the schools.
And that's why I was asking for the data from the schools, was the disaggregated data of the populations. To the point that you were making as well, um, are we meeting all of the different demographic groups? Or they're just not, they're, they're not in that school district and you can't, right, serve. So, but, but it would be interesting to know. How you, how the different demographic groups are, are. Recruited or, or not, or participated or not.
So we'll follow back up based off the comments today for the board to see with the board there. Yeah, we have our main presentation, Compton College, diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility. We have Dr. Balar, who will do the presentation, with the Director of Personal Development. Now, first, a winner for the deputized administration.
So I just want to put it out in the air, I'm not doing my best, so I would be able to know, maybe my voice. Right, so good evening, uh, board members. President Curry and everyone here, it's great to be here to present on behalf of my colleague Jennifer Fescheck. Who's the Director of Diversity and Compliance, if I'm not, next slide please. So tonight we're going to be discussing uh about diversity, equity, inclusion, specifically. What we're doing here as it relates to our employees at Compton College. As you can see in the table of contents, we're going to go over most importantly some data, like what is the summarization of what that data means, what it's telling us. And then the outcomes, what we found based upon the data. Uh, and then following up with my favorite, our force professional development. Next slide. So Compton College, we say that we're welcoming an inclusive order, a reason. To make sure that we're making sure that our people are successful. How do we do that? By leaning into D P I A, meaning diversity, equity, inclusion, stability. And we're, it's the part, it's to offer quality and comprehensive employee lifecycle here at Compton. And we do that by making sure that we're grounded in D I A efforts, next slide please. And so the reason why we do this primarily is the regulatory uh guidance, right? So we have education code that we get clear to at a state level. But also because here at Compton, we care about what it looks like to be diverse in our workforce. And in order to do that, we have to establish um grounds for making sure that we're richly. Including diversity and inclusion with our hiring process. And so we're going to get into some data, next slide please. Next slide. So this data is going to talk about our new higher ethnicity groups. We're going to start it off with administration. What you can see before you is from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, there's been some slight differences. Primarily in the areas of our black employees and our Latinx, as well as even our white employees. So what I see here in twenty twenty-three is that we have made some changes in, in the hiring process. As it relates to our, our black employees and our Latinx, but it's going to continue to progress as we move forward the next slide. In the next slide, we're talking about classified employees, and if you see what I see. For our Latinx in twenty twenty-three, we have really increased that. What does that tell me? That means that we adhere to D I A here at Compton College. By making sure that we're reaching out to our Latinx community to mirror our student population as an H S I. Uh, next, we have our black employees as well. So you see that there's a consistent flow with that with our black employees as well, next slide. Our new hires as related to faculty, well, this is where we're still moving forward with our Latinx of population, as well as our black employees. And we've even sprinkled a little bit more there in our, our white employee groups with our faculty, but more primarily that we're focused in our, on our Latinx. Because being an H S I, we want to mirror our student population, next slide please. Overall, the new higher ethnicities or the makeup of all of our employee groups. Once again, we're seeing that Latinx is on a current trend cycle, which I am proud of here at Compton College, next slide please. New hire gender administrators, so what you see before you, what I see, we see female, male. And uh, there seems to be some consistency over the past several years there. Um, you will notice that moving forward, we will be using different terminology as it relates to gender. So uh, instead of saying female, male, we'll move forward with man, woman, not binary, unknown, but moving forward to the next slide please. For our classified employees, once again, you see there's some consistency, it's, it's more so even, but we've sprinkled in some, some new. Gender profiling there. So you see that it's consistent, there's some growth there with, with both genders. Uh, or across the gender population in twenty twenty-three, um, to make it diverse, next slide please. And then for our faculty, um, it's pretty uh consistent as it relates to it being uh twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. I see the same trend kind of even on, on both groupings, specifically male and uh female, next slide please. And then overall, again, you see that we see a little bit higher in the male category for twenty twenty-three. Um, and then uh some consistency with the other groups, next slide. As we get into the employee data on ethnicity, overall historically, we see before us uh some uh numbers that stand out. Specific to our Aladdinex and our African-American, a groupings for all of our employees. And again, this is available in, in the board uh notes, so again, I'm moving through this so we can get to the meat of this conversation, next slide please. And then the gender makeup for all employees, again, it's pretty consistent over the course of the timeline, as you see and I see that together. And so next slide please. So a summary, this is where we're going to get into what really stood out to us. And we noticed that a higher population as it relates to our Latinx employees overall in all categories, really increased here at Compton College. That means something. That means that we noticed the need and we met that need here in human resources, it's limited to the recruitment process and what that entail. Uh, we've increased our Latinx and black employees and faculty hiring, I'm proud to say that. And then doubled the number of newly hired classified employees from previous years who identified as Latinx. So that speaks for itself. Um, as far as our Asian civic island, our founder representation and all classifications, we're working on that. And you'll see that noted in our E O plan for point thirteen, next slide. Now, the outcomes, what does this data mean and how we moving forward to make sure that we are making that change possible, next slide. How many of you know what the N C employee survey is? Why did a little research myself, because I hear that name, and I'm not so good with the. The words sometimes, right? I do some research. So that's the National Effecting of Collegiate Campus Climate. It's a quantitative survey that looks into uh race. Race, more specifically to racial climate on a campus. And it has six components that I found very interesting. If you have time, I would uh suggest that you look at this, the content area included. For students, mattering affirmation, cross-racial engagement, racial learning and literacy, encounter with racial stress. We also have the same for staff and faculty. Workplace mattering, racial burning, literacy, encounter with racial stress, and workplace equity. So you might say, why am I mentioning this? Well, there's a reason why the survey is dedicated uh across our, our campus. Because we want to make a change and how do we do that? Well, one way Compton did that, next slide please. Is through the inception of the Compton College USC Faculty Prep Academy. This is an academy where people who want to become faculty members uh in the California Community College System. Will be trained by our esteemed colleagues here at Compton College. And so before, as you see, we have a number of thirty participants who are engaging in uh work, uh work groups as, as well as webinars. And so we kicked it off earlier this year, and it's still ongoing. So there's different key elements, so there's different modalities and how they're learning. But it's really a, a collaboration of what it looks like to be a faculty in the community college system, and I'm happy to say we're doing it at Compton College. So that's pretty cool, next slide please. Another thing that we're doing is making sure that we are centering our recruitment in equal employment opportunity. And making sure that we're doing training. So this is important, not just in HR aspect for a campus-wide effort. We're going to include a training for all of the managers and supervisors. And then also move forward with our committees, and what that training will entail is reinforcing our image diversity. Through E O training, so that's going to cover E O policies, roles and responsibilities for committees. The hiring process at Compton College, and then making sure that we're not biased, that's most important, next slide please. Uh, next, we have some updates here. So from the, the chancellor's office, we have this call to action that we're working on. And you might say, how are we doing this? Well, we're establishing a Compton College task force for equitable approach to community safety and health. So one thing that we do here at Compton is that when we see something that needs to be corrected, we do that. And so we have several committees on proactive, this makes it consistent. So that we are addressing racism and social justice amongst our campus. To make sure that we are moving forward and elevating what we do here at Compton. Um, and then also we host ongoing dialogue, partners agents, and we can do this since twenty twenty. So this is not really a topic, this is true to Compton, next slide please. And then one of my favorite things on that body, professional learning is something that we've been doing. And the cool thing that we do is not just teaching and learning, we do it outside of the classroom as well. Also, thankful to Dr. Curry, he allows us to do what I call the conference cohorts. And that means that we take learning to make it fun. And so more recently, I believe we have some people here that actually work with us to work on conferences. One being the first ever N R D conference, the Women of Power in the California Community College. And when we do these cohorts, we make sure that it's supplied with students, faculty, faculty, professional women managers like myself. And so doing that, we are creating a community of learning together, so that it matters with your role. It matters that we're trying to be diverse and inclusive, while making it a sustainable task. It's not something that we're talking about on paper, we do whenever that's at Compton College. Um, also, with professional learning, we have ongoing training throughout every semester, we even do this through the summer. And you'll see that we do implicit bias training, but there's all types of things, this is just topics that we cover. This is not just the name of a, a training that we take, so it's ongoing, it's continued, because it completely realize that it's in there. Next slide. Now, that said, questions for Jennifer, are you here, you have any questions?
Um, students have seen comments.
Um, I asked this question when I joined, it was wonderful, the presentation. Um, again, I know that they go through actual like uh workshops and for them to learn. How to work with um each other in general, and I'm wondering, again, like, is it a different way that they digest this information? Or you guys know that they are digesting, you know, information?
That's a good question. So what I'm hearing you say is, when people go to professional development training, how do I know that they're actually applying any of their everyday work? Unfortunately, I can't confirm if they actually say what we give them and apply it, and in fact, I'll find the classroom, but hopefully that is longer. We're continuously operating it, so they know that there's a resource available. One thing that I try to do is make workshops into theories, because to truly learn something, you cannot go to one workshop and change your life. You have to continue to be exposed to things that are life-changing. And so I made it a task of mine to continue with the proper professional development that is serious for me. And it feels more so like a natural process instead of a classing box. So as you know, when I ask things, I try to be informal, whether it's a student, that's a student. Or someone who's a faculty member who's a student or learning environment. It's important to make sure that people understand that we are more than our roles and that we are taking it for. So I try to infuse the humanized experience. So my hope is that even though I'm not tracking through data yet, you have experienced somebody who's thoughtful.
Dr. Lynn?
Well, thank you so much for having this work. I just took with things, maybe for future conversation. It, it is important, I think, uh, as Kendra said, to be able to. For accountability purposes, that there are actionable outcomes. To learning in the moment, because the students' literal experiences are at stake. And so I'm just wondering ways in which there are checks and balances and ongoing. Uh, ways in which to assess the outcomes. And then finally, um, very proud of the. Growth across the faculty and the staff and children's representation. And wanting to ensure that the messaging is that. While the representation is really important, it is also important to challenge these historical narratives of who can be a faculty member. Or who can have excellence in ethnicities, who has a history of intellectualism, refuting racism. So I think it is important when we talk about these numbers. That intentionality of their exclusion should also be part of that. In addition to it being representative of the existing population. Because I think that humanity means people sometimes feel as if it's just a pleasant fact.
Yes, again, thank you, Jennifer, for your. Ms. Balar, thank you for the presentation. Again, as always, I'm very informative. Uh, I just wanted to just ask about um some of the um, um, on billing. Professional development training was listed, um, do you see like some of the areas that's covered? Um, uh, touching upon. Uh, some of the mental health, I'm just thinking, you know, about a lot of our, you know, as, as well as our faculty and staff. Um, but some of the students, of what they're probably dealing with, if there's training that is um.
I love that you asked that.
You know why?
Because a, a culturally relevant, uh, responsive training in mental health is going to be one of the core that we're. Moving forward, but more specifically moving forward starting with a lot of, we have a theory. That's going to be uh focused on mental health, when being traumatized from in the classroom, that's all outside of classroom. So we have a fair thing, it was going to be discussed in the with faculty, class, other sessions and management. Not just that person, we may, we may talk to them online. And so, uh, until the, the end of this month, every week, there will be a workshop. And then in a month, the management will be along, wearing this something, so making sure every week, uh, within a month, they need to do something. But this is going to be very, especially because our faculty, we have worked forever to do the things, to put this together. So being culturally responsive to our stage and really looking at what that looks like to be trauma-informed and interactive. People were real, you know, living a real life, you know, what is that, live life outside of the days? That's what we're trying to prepare our, our faculty, make our, our firing points, for the fight, with which. So we prioritize people to, to hire as soon as.
Yeah, uh, thank you. And then with that, I would say just to give um voice to, um, I know we have, um. Um, like our foster youth, you know, our foster youth population, as well as, you know, like our veteran, you know, population. Because we, you know, on both sides, male and female, um, uh, sexual trauma, B T S D. Um, you know, suicide, you know, the suicide rate, and I know we have those students that are coming into. You know, that are coming to utilize the benefits and continue with their education, you know, as well. So, um, again, I think they do. Um, yeah, that's.
I might, I had my notes and I didn't mention that, so how would you know? And I'll, I'll shout out for L E D T, but we also have that training um to ensure that we're addressing very special. I think I will add to that, I didn't have that.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
That's all I have, um, you can leave.
I just have a quick question with the, the new hire data. Do we collect information that if they follow their, of the T T plus? Or if they're uh, if they're a person with disabilities?
So what do you mean specifically to that, if there?
Oh, because, um, and in this presentation, we do got, um, race and gender.
Yeah, so we don't have their, their sexual, uh, sexuality listed, it's just their race and gender, but not their sexual one.
Yes. Okay.
Maybe, and, and then the other question was?
Oh, also like, like. I guess the data of like, which of our new hires, if, if, and if are uh an individual with disabilities.
We typically don't list that, but they do have an option to submit, so if you have something.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's, it's been. Oh, moved, moved by, by Trustee Calhoun and Stephanie by Trustee Calhoun. Major, um, discussion. Does any? Any discussion, does any trustee wish to? Like, is there any discussion?
Um, no discussion. No discussion.
The motion carries.
Moving on to item fourteen action items. Fourteen point zero one, revised content, community college district measure C bond fund budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Uh, now do we have any discussion on student trusty cards? Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee, trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
I call the question.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to fourteen point zero two, administrative services content of CCD resolution number five dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four eight, budget transfer augmentations for fiscal year from two thousand three or in two thousand four, is there motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussion, trustee points?
Not exactly.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun? Discussion? That I have a discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to fourteen point zero three, administrative services contracts over a hundred a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred amendment to the foyer higher education group incorporated, is there a motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussion, trustee?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion? Can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to fourteen point zero four, facilities planning and development contracts over a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred. This is an amendment to Atlas United Hyder Inspection Group, number ten dash nineteen forty-three P W. One one nine eighty-two amendment number three R one instructional building number two, is there a motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussions, trustee point?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to fourteen one zero five. It's an amendment to sure incorporated physical education complex. Do I have a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by student trusty clients. Is there any discussion, student trusty?
Not that.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero six, this is, this is an amendment, application for free construction incorporated. Constructional building number two, project amendment number four, is there a motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussion, trustee points?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to fourteen point zero seven, facilities planning and development. Rejection of all bid proposals for R F E C C C dash zero eighty-one student housing. Do I, is there a motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussions, student?
No, definitely.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item fifteen, discussion in action. Dr. Curry?
So the first item for discussion and action is enrollment update. This gives you information regards to enrollment for summer and also for fall. Also included in the report is additional information that was requested in the last meeting regards to enrollment. So we opened up the attachment. The F T S by student type, I think the board asked for that at the last meeting. So we were able to provide the chart, and Sherry and Mary could talk about that. A little bit, it was questioned at the last meeting, one of the board members mentioned about what type of students were enrolled in. And so Sherry can talk about that a little bit, regards to that stuff.
To get those, you mean? Then I said, what? Oh, sorry, I I'm questioning.
It was trustee Calhoun? Yeah, trustee Calhoun?
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
Um, so while we look at the F T S by student type, really comparing twenty twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. As the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we're still in summer and a little bit of fall. Um, you can see that all of our groups uh increased, except for our returning students remain mostly flat. And we went F T S less this year. But our continuing students uh went up by three hundred and thirty-two F T S. Our special admins, which are our rural enrollment students, increased. But you can see that the percentage of the total F T S is roughly the same as it was, except for our first time students. So our percentage of first time students has really increased. And our percentage of first time transfer students, being students who came to the conference for the first time but had been at some other institution um had G P's percentage-wise, like of the whole. Um, and so that's what we're looking at here. Um, in our adult school population, we're starting to get more F T S from our little school. So this is a snapshot of um the type by student type for the different groups of students.
One thing to point out, if you look at our F T S increase, look at the number for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the number for twenty-three, twenty-four, we increased by over six, six hundred F T S uh over in one year. And that's a significant increase. And so we can keep this trajectory, I believe we can get back to the three ninety F T S over time. But you can see that we have, it has been steady increases, but they showed a significant increase for each.
Our goal for next year is four thousand one.
The next item, fifteen point zero two, is our fact book. Uh, this is for, as the board knows, we, every year we present the fact book around this time, thanking to uh Amari Woods. Our our dean of institutional effectiveness. And this has been our fact book, which is a dashboard. So we have the opportunity to really drill down and get some limited data about what we know in our fact book. So I I asked the board to spend some time, there's a couple weeks, to generate more data about our students and what uh who are students with different aspects of life. That is also available online as well. We're really excited about this dashboard. And this is a model in the state of California, how we present data and make it public. And that includes the actually, discussion exam.
Moving on to item sixteen, grant items. Sixteen point zero one, administrative services grants, Calhoun Department of Social Services, Cal fresh outreach grant. Is there a motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussion, trustee point?
No, absolutely.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item sixteen point zero ten, administrative services brands, South Bay Workforce Investment Board Incorporated, City of the Bingowood, unit number twenty-four dash W zero seven six, contract number twenty-five zero zero three one five six zero eight with Los Angeles, including the college district under regional pay group sixteen. Subregion Dean Education Collaborative Grant Program, number forty-five zero zero three zero one three zero nine, is there a motion?
So move second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Is there any discussions, trustee point? Dr. Curry?
I just wanted to say this is significant for the dish, and we receive important thousand dollars, which is part of our health profession partnership that we've been working on with Senator Mike Gibson, Care Journey Community Health, St. John's um community, St. John's Community Health Center, also with Child University and also um Scotty University, Scotty University with sales. So this is a significant, which we'll be able to hire through St. John's, a project manager, a project specialist to be able to provide oversight and support for this partnership. And this is a person that's currently in this this district.
Trustee Collins?
No discussion.
Trustee Calhoun?
Um, Dr. Curry, can you can, can you repeat that amount again?
Four hundred fifty thousand.
Four hundred fifty thousand? Thank you. Go ahead.
Trustee Calhoun?
No discussion.
Have no discussion, can we have a vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item seventeen, board policies and administrative regulations. Dr. Curry?
These are the updated board policies and administrative regulations, some of the board policies, the board policy will be in the board agenda next month uh for approval, I think we have the outstanding job in regards to updating our policies for the district. And we'll continue to provide training for employees as based to implementation of these policies. No action, right?
Moving on to item eighteen, information items, Dr. Curry?
Just want to point out a couple, one, we provided update on the O B W kind of expand and what we're at, at least that. Item eighteen twenty-one four is our quarterly fiscal status report, which is submitted to the California Department of Chances Office a couple weeks ago. You also have update of our budgets and actuals. And you also have updates on the our state of California budget and our budget development process. Uh, we also provide a stacking update in regards to hiring for the district. You also have an update on our E E O plan, which we talked about last month. For each month, we're updating our E E O plan, action plan, to show me the most attached as based to some of those initiatives, including that thing. We also included the legislative update, which also includes the uh a letter that supported uh a letter that I posed regards to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-eight regards to any fund downs. So we have a lot of information there and also the follow-up law for the district is how we monitor and follow that up with the board trustees as based to their request. I think that includes the information that we have for the district.
Then would have any questions? Whether there be question? Moving on to item nineteen, future agenda items, Dr. Curry?
So next month, we have the equitable placement, eighty-seven oh five, the seventy oh five presentation. We have a budget, a technical budget being brought forward. We have an update on basic needs and success, and also business discussion report.
Moving on to item twenty-four, reports, Dr. Curry?
A couple items to update, one is that we're moving forward with the opening of instructional building number two. The first moving date is May thirty-first for academic affairs. And then June fourteenth, the movement of faculty and also staff, for faculty within that building and classrooms. So we'll be open by the uh June seventeenth, or movement is on June fourteen. So really excited about where we're at, regards to placing that possibility. Uh, we're still gonna have to, you know, work with the contractor, but we'll be able to to occupy, to occupy the building beginning uh in on May thirty-first. Also want to say thank the board trustees, you were working on the bond budget. And so this evening, you approve the bond, better C but, better C C, better C budget. We'll come back in regards to better C C budget uh at the next board meeting, regards to update on that. We also want to just remind everyone about commencement is scheduled for June seventh at six o'clock, and then we help. There's some updates to everyone in regards to that. Uh, Dr. David Carlisle, the president of Child University, will be our keynote speaker. Um, and that includes, oh, before I leave, today is uh Vice President of Student Services, Nicole Jones's birthday. I want to make sure we say happy birthday to uh Nicole Jones.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to, happy birthday. Happy birthday, may the good Lord bless you, everybody, the good Lord bless you. And happy birthday. Happy birthday, my friend. I don't know what y'all was doing, I said, but I'm saying you have a birthday to my friend.
This is our second holiday, the birthday of the divorce, I have to tell them.
Because I'm her friend, I'm not seeing.
And so the the last one, I do want to announce, uh, we've been working with Senator Stephen Bradford, uh, after Black Lives Success Week regards to a bill based off of a concept of what we at Compecology regards to black serving institutions. And the Senate Bill thirteen forty-eight was amended this week, which would set the status for California to have a designation for black serving institution, which is ten percent or fifteen percent students. And so that's going in front of the Senate floor this week, and then just some of them working through the assembly. So it's based off the concept of the model of Compecology. So I'm really excited. That includes my report.
Still have any rest, see time?
Again, you guys, um, this, of course, they already explained, it's be my last meeting with you guys. It's been very much an honor to speak with you guys, laugh with you guys, be serious. Go through so much different emotions, um, I appreciate it. Definitely will miss something valuable to be in here and to be something that's very memorable. And before I finish, I definitely want you guys to know what you're gonna see in June, but we do have the actual student trustee that will be to do first, and I definitely just wanna, you know, pass this on to her, let her know that she's gonna be the next one, so that's what I'd like to do. Would you like to stand and let them know, honey? Come on, come on. Hi, I'm below.
How y'all doing today? I'm sweet with Tom, it's nice to meet you guys all. And thank you for allowing me to sit here, um, sit in on the board meeting and meet you guys all from the backside.
I would hand it off to you, the student trustee, to make sure you let her know that you need a name, because you are a person besides student trustee for next year. So that's the other thing that you should advocate for, but yes, congratulations.
And I love everything that you guys have said about Kendra, that was so beautiful.
That is all from my reporting, thank you guys again.
Trustee Calhoun?
I think, well, for the first time, I don't have anything to say. I just, I don't, right? Yes, so for the first time for the record, uh, trustee Calhoun has um nothing to report for her oral report. I'm sorry, but I mean.
Trustee Calhoun?
Just, listen, um, I went to the uh E board convention of the Democratic Party. And I think, do not quote me, but I think it was C T A. There's a bill that's coming down and is called Initiative to Guarantee High School Students a Financial Education. They have added another layer for high school students to get this. And I think it was C T A, the chairman for C T A that stood at the mic. And they were fighting against this, because nobody came to C T A. Nobody discussed it with the conditions, adds another layer of requirement for high school students, although they might need it. It just, and it didn't go through C T A academic senate or anything, they were not at the table when this was discussed. through C T A academic senate or anything. They were not at the table when this was discussed. I'm sorry, I forgot the gentleman, they got from our office, but uh we was up in San Diego, so it was somebody. And that person was really, really upset. And there were some teachers there that were upset because they're adding something else on to the teachers as far as the curriculum and uh teaching uh the high school students is an added extra burden on the high school students. So there were other bills, but that's, that's one that we will see uh come out, and it's possibility it might be on the ballot. Yeah, there, there are other initiatives that are going to be on the ballot in November. So before you vote yes on all those initiatives, when you get that package at your house, that big old thick package a lot of people just lay it down. You need to read the pros and the cons of that ballot issue. Because some of the ballot issues are going up against a ballot issue that's already been decided. Like, I think it's A C A eight or something, and somebody's putting something else against it. So everybody, please pay attention when you get that big book. Don't just lay it down, you need to read the pros and the cons of what's going on the ballot in November. It's very, very Other than that, I don't have anything else to say. If I did, I'm not saying it does.
As for
Oh, I do. Sherry, Sherry, you got it going on, girl. I don't know what's going on, but you got it going on. You had, you got me really laughing with the stuff you're saying.
One roll?
I just want to talk about you on roll, girl. I like it.
And just um briefly for my report, I attended a panel discussion that was um run by Alliance for a Better Community. It was on um the housing crisis in Los Angeles and the Keen York Speaker was Supervisor Holly Mitchell. That was me and their team. And also I attended a meeting brief undone by this room called Local Congress, and I got to meet um local elected officials from LA County and representatives from different unions and nonprofits. And I just hope to um see some of our board members at a few of these events. There's a lot of um in this event, but I mean, I'm gonna make a few of them. So I'm excited to have them.
You're on this side over here. Thank you.
And that's it for my report. Item twenty-one, our next um scheduled board meeting is June eighteen twenty twenty-four. Close session begins at five P M. Open session begins at six P M. And the meeting is now adjourned at eight twenty-one.